Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Benny Palermo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just wanted to say as we gather here today with electricity and gas and water and we're dry, I can't possibly comprehend what the state of Texas and surrounding are going through. So I would like to ask each and every one of you to keep them in your thoughts and prayers and also the volunteers that are heading that way to help them. So, thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six and seven relate to the same development, Kennison addition. Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Kennison addition located at 3105 North 83rd Street. Planning Board recommends approval. Planning Department recommends denial. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat for Kennison addition located at 3105 North 83rd Street. Planning Board recommends approval. Planning Department recommends denial.
Public hearing on agenda items number seven and eight are today. Proponents, please. Six and seven, I'm sorry, six and seven.
I'm Steve Randham. I'm an attorney with Corcoran-Huck Law Firm, 2120 South 72nd Street, Suite 1200, Omaha 68124. We're counsel for Mr. Kennison, who I expected to be here but isn't here yet, and I may just proceed because I think I can answer all the questions that he would be able to answer. This is a minor plat subdivision request, and I'll put a map up here.
Would you pull the mic over with you?
Mike?
Yeah, just pull the mic over. Yeah, it'll slide over with.
And so Gary is the owner of 3105 North 83rd Street, and it's approximately a 40,000 square foot lot, and he's proposing a subdivision. Terrible artist, but approximately cut it in half and having a lot on the north half and then his residence on the south half, and he was going to build a structure then on the new lot created on the north half. This comes with the planning board recommendation. I would say that I don't think there's anything controversial about Mr. Kennison's request in the context of, you know, the boundaries of his lot. It's certainly large enough to be split into two, and this is the type of proposal that would usually be handled based on an administrative subdivision. The reason why we're here, though, is that there's a landlocked parcel behind Mr. Kennison's lot, 3105 and a half, that was transferred from Mr. Kennison to his neighbor to the north back in 2008 for, I think, just $1. And that is a landlocked parcel that doesn't have street access. The planning department had asked us to try to seek approval from the neighbor to either have him participate in the replating process and to merge his two lots into one, so the north half and the landlocked parcel into one lot, or to transfer the lot back to Gary at 3105. And we just weren't able to get that consent. Both of those require the voluntary participation of the neighbor, and we just weren't able to procure that. So we filed this minor plat subdivision, and so Gary can do what he wants to do with his property, which is to split it into two lots. I'll let the planning department speak for themselves if they want, but I think they see this as an opportunity to correct a problem, which is a problem. It's the landlocked parcel. I think their concern rightfully with the landlocked parcel is that if someone would buy it, they wouldn't be able to obtain a building permit on it and would be kind of out of luck. I don't think that's a significant concern here, and there's a few reasons why. First of all, I think just finding a buyer who would buy that landlocked parcel with the idea of building a residence on it is probably a remote possibility. The other thing is why that's a separate tax parcel on the accessory rules as far as the treasure is concerned. I think for all intents and purposes, it's a part of the main lot with a residence on it, and if it's going to be conveyed, both buyer and seller would expect that it would follow with the lot with the residence on it. And then furthermore, if someone were to sell just the landlocked parcel, a right-of-way easement could be granted over 3217 to access the parcel. And under Nebraska law, there's a concept called an easement by necessity, so even if an easement wasn't granted voluntarily, the landlocked parcel could claim some access. So, just to summarize, the final thoughts is I don't think there's anything wrong with what Gary is trying to do with his lot. The problem is the lot behind him, which is owned by someone else who Gary doesn't have any control over. And the problem that the planning department is trying to solve, which is the landlocked parcel, it's not going to be either cured or exacerbated by anything that you do here today. The same problem that exists right now is going to exist tomorrow regardless of how you vote. If you vote to approve, there's still going to be a landlocked parcel behind him. If you vote to deny, there's still going to be a landlocked parcel that needs to be addressed. I would therefore suggest that you just allow Mr. Kennison to do what he wants to do with his property, which is to subdivide it into two lots. I think that's what the planning board sort of saw it as, and we, I'd just ask that you follow through the planning board recommendation and vote to approve this request.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Would you like, did you want to speak, or did you want to just raise your hand? If you would, and if all three of you want to speak, if you can stop and sit up in the front, please, that'd be fine, and we can expedite this a little bit. Or all three of you can stand up together.
We can do that. You want to go first, or should I?
Nope, I can do it. My name's Robert Zerline. I live on 3217 North 83rd. I'm opposed to this application that it creates additional housing density along a stretch of the north 83rd Street that is not very dense. It will adversely offset my property value, and then I request the council accept the recommendation of the planning department to deny the application.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Hal Darling. Thank you for hearing me out. I live across the street from the property in question. And I oppose it in the strongest possible terms.
What's your address?
Oh, 3210 North 83rd Street, pretty much directly across the street. I oppose this in the strongest possible terms because I think the neighborhood, as it appears now, reflects a certain kind of continuity that comes from planning. Most neighborhoods are planned in one way or another, and I think that continuity will be lost if this lot is subdivided and he puts a house on it, no matter how small that house might be. Just because there might technically be room to place a house between two existing homes that were planned decades ago doesn't necessarily reflect the idea that one should do such a thing. And I just think the continuity of the neighborhood is going to be adversely affected if this is allowed, and I want to thank you for hearing me out, my objections. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi, I'm Mary Darling. I own with Hal 3210 North 83rd Street and also the lot next to it, so I thought we should have two votes, so, not that we vote, but. So, yeah, this is my house here, and, you know, our view is directly affected by having another house in between these two houses. The lot is proposed to be divided in half. It's already halfway over, so I don't know how much more space that's going to be going across there, but then there has to be 10-foot setbacks on each side and a set book up And so that's a lot of difference to me in what I look at every day with three houses directly across the street from me instead of two. I'm concerned about the driveway. I'm concerned about runoff. I've had extensive runoff in my home that the cities helped me out in the past with trying to stop all that runoff coming in my driveway, so just the density. I'm also concerned about lowering of my property values and the change in character of the street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? The proponents have spoken already. I will ask the attorney if he wants some rebuttal time, but that'll be about all.
Thank you, Chairman. That is Mr. Kennison, who's the property owner.
Okay, well, he needs to come down there. Okay, people call him.
And he can answer questions, I think, about what he plans to do with that proposal with the new lot.
Basically, I just wanted to say.
Identify yourself. Name, address for the record, please.
Gary Kennison. 3105 North 83rd Street. And I just wanted to say the new lot will be 83 foot wide by 310, so it's a very big lot. And, you know, the city, as far as density goes, that's a moot point because, you know, the city wants density. They don't want people moving out to the suburbs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Did you have, I wanted to give you some time to rebut anything you may have heard today, but give me, give you about a minute, sir.
Okay. Well, I think the space is large enough to do the construction that's planned on the subdivided lot, and we are here just on the subdivision of the lot into two. And the concern of the planning department is not the space of the lot, it's the access to the landlocked parcel behind there. So that was the reason for the denial. I just don't want to have the two issues confused. I understand the neighbors have separate concerns, but that was different than what was addressed before, the planning board and in the planning department recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this is in the Keystone neighborhood, which is an area I represent, and I think we have a pretty unusual situation here that I think Mr. Randham did a nice job of explaining. And I understand why it would be the opinion of the planning department that it should be denied, but I can also see why it would be the opinion of the planning board that it be approved. Mr. Fanslaw, is there anything you'd like to add to the analysis Mr. Randham provided there in terms of the department's perspective?
Sure, yeah. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I guess I would say that I think the statement was made that if the eastern half of 3105 and a half, which is the eastern portion of the lot that used to belong to the applicant, was sold and something, a house or something, would be proposed to be constructed on it, I just want to go on record saying that we couldn't issue a building permit for that parcel because it's not a legal lot of record. It's a partial lot, which was part of the reason for our opposition in the first place, and it does not abut 83rd Street, so it'd be very, very difficult to create a legal lot of record since it does not abut 83rd Street. And our, you know, basically, our experience tells us that creating lots that do not have access or abut public right-of-way is not a good practice to get into. We could have, and we routinely subdivide lots administratively, but not in this situation. We haven't done it in the past. So when staff had conversations with the applicant and the property owner about doing it administratively, we told them we couldn't support it and that if he chose to do so, he could go through the entitlement process through planning board and city council, which obviously he chose to do. We did not support it at planning board, and we still don't support it today.
Okay. And then tell me, if 3105 and a half were not a factor in this conversation, would the department typically support the subdivision of 3105 on its own?
If it stood by itself, yes. We don't have a problem with the density. The two lots that would be created with the subdivision are plenty big enough to support a house in each lot.
Okay. And then can I have the owner of 3217 come back down?
He owns that 3105 and a half.
Yeah, but this is, yeah. Thank you. Your name again and address.
Robert Zerline.
Thanks, just for the record.
Yep.
Tell me about 3105 and a half and what your thought is with that property or what the intention would be in the future.
My intention was to put a garden in there and grow vegetables and stuff. I have one on the other side of my street right now, and then I found out that it has, it's full of walnut trees, which don't induce to gardening, so that's where I stand. And I didn't buy it for a dollar. He had some trees that were blown down by a storm. I cut all the trees down and worked for the price of the land, so I paid actually 2,500 bucks for it.
Okay. So the thought would be just keep it a wooded area, probably not to be developed?
I can't say that. I don't plan on it, but.
Okay, all right. And then Mr. Kennison, if you could come down, please, too. And your name and address, just for the record again, too.
Gary Kennison, 3105 North 83rd.
Your intention with subdividing that property is to build another residence there, right?
Right.
And should there ever be another, should there be a need to access 3105 and a half, you're willing to entertain that conversation about an easement that might be required there?
That would be fine, yeah.
All right. And then, did you engage your neighbors in this conversation, too, about, you know, your intention to subdivide the property and build new residence?
Yes, yeah, this is, I bought this house 17 years ago because the whole idea was I wanted to build another house and then sell this house.
Okay. So you all had a conversation about it, but just didn't agree on the density component of what we're talking about here, if fair to characterize it that way?
Yeah, basically.
I saw some heads nodding over there, too. Or do you want to speak to that also, if you'd like?
I was never informed of any such plans.
But you want to come up to the microphone, please?
Well, she lives across the street. I don't, I don't see the need to inform her.
Well, we were never informed of such a plan, so.
Okay. Your name and address, too?
3210 North 83rd Street and 3216.
Okay, so the nature of your opposition is just the density concern?
Density in the neighborhood, lowering of property taxes. I bought our house in '89 because it's in Keystone and the neighborhood's absolutely beautiful with large lots and trees, and that's why people move there. And we bought the spare lot for back taxes over, like, 2005 to 2007, also to have wide-open spaces. On our side of the street, it's wide open anyway.
Okay, thank you. Dad, please.
One more thing?
Sure.
Name and address.
I was not, Robert Zerline. I was really not informed of any splitting the lot when he bought the place. He planned on living there and didn't talk about it until about five or six years later that he decided he wanted to try to split a lot to build something.
Okay.
And I, thank you very much.
And I thought I noticed, too, that there was no opposition at planning board, right? Did neighbors not go to planning board meetings to express your opposition?
I was never notified of it.
Okay.
Of any meetings going or anything going on.
Okay. So typically, all neighbors within 300 feet, I think it is, are notified of any planning board or city council action, but never received?
I never received anything.
Okay. Okay.
If I may?
Yeah, one more time, please.
Hal Darling, 3210 North 83rd. Just to my point the last time I spoke, if you're familiar with Keystone as a neighborhood, it could easily be categorized or characterized as a neighborhood where the houses themselves may not be all that large, but the lots are usually quite big. And again, to my point from last time, if he puts a house on this subdivided lot, the continuity of that look on my street is lost, and I don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, I guess I see that as the main issue here. I think we have a, we have an oddity in the respect of 3105 and a half in the back there and with the implications that has towards the planning department's analysis, but in my mind, it's much more of a practical decision we have to make today regarding the subdivision of the property and is that desirable or not. Clearly, it is to the property owner, but not so much to his neighbors, which isn't really an unusual situation we encounter. But it is true, I think, as the planning department said, that a property owner could do this and typically would be approved to do this on a lot absent the 3105 and a half factor, so that's the dilemma I'm kind of struggling with right now, and I'll yield the microphone at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to address a couple of things that were said. When we talk about the character of the neighborhood, I'm looking at an aerial that would tell me that 2928, 2932, 3002, 3216, 3220, 3009, which are all fronting 83rd Street, would all be about the same size, and the proposed split would then be by the same size as those addresses I just named. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure I buy the character of the neighborhood being changed by this action. I'll agree with Mr. Zerline, too, on the matter of density not being relevant here. Then, I guess the last thing is, well, actually, before the last thing, Mr. Fanslaw, can you, typically, as was pointed out, notifications go out. Is there a way to confirm that that was done?
We're required to send notifications out and rezonings and other issues, but not plating of this nature.
All right, thank you. And then I guess the last thing I wanted to bring up are that, you know, we all as property owners have property rights, and I think what Mr. Zerline is intending to do is fully within his rights, and therefore I'll be supportive of this. Thank you.
There are no further lights? Is there motion? Or Ms. Melton?
Sorry, I was.
Okay.
No, and I just want to say, you know, sometimes you can get caught up with kind of the emotional things of, well, this is what I would like to see, but the bottom line, it really does come down to individual property rights, and so we can't be dictating what people do do with their property as long as it's within the law and the law allows it. And so, and I think even the planning department would have supported this. The reasons I think that the neighbors don't want it don't fall into the same reasons where the planning department has an issue with. So although I understand that there will be another home in there, I think that Councilman Harding makes a good point that there's many other lots that are the same size. So although I feel for the neighbors who don't want this right there, I honestly believe that just constitutionally, whether I like Mr. Kennison's idea or not, he has the right to do it with his property. So I'm going to have to let that guide me and not my emotions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, as I was thinking through this and the reason for the department's denial, I was thinking, well, they want to make sure that that outlot, 3205 and a half, has access to 83rd Street, and the easement by necessity, at least the most recent case I read happened to be a case right by my house. It's like, I think, 4204 Center or something. There was, guy has a house there. The city had widened 42nd Street sometime and took away his driveway and built a big wall, so the only way he can get out is if he can build a driveway over the property, which is a sliver of out parcel to 42nd Street. Supreme Court said, well, since you don't have any other way on your property to get out, there's an easement by necessity to go over this other person and their property. Since Mr. Zerline owns the property, 3205 and a half, as well as the property to the north of this one, I would think that he would have less of an argument in terms of using his own property to benefit that out, that remote property, at least as I see it. I could be wrong, but the point is, I don't know that I buy that the loss of access to the lot that Mr. Zerline acquired is somehow now Mr. Kennison's issue, given that Mr. Zerline could provide access to that lot if he so chose to develop it. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you. There are no further lights? Is there motion?
Moved to approve. Six and seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items six and seven, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six and seven are approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Elkhorn River Preserve located southwest of 222nd Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Los. I'm with TD Two Engineering, 10836 Old Mill Road, just available here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. No lights, is there motion? Second, roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Clearview Hills located southwest of 75th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the applicant. This is 22 acres that's southwest of State Street and 75th Street. It is proposed for multifamily uses, which is in accordance with the master plan. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We still had some people come to the planning commission. Obviously, had some issues on land use and also had an issue with respect to 75th Street and the maintenance thereof. The development to the east is only partially developed, been there for a long time, not in the hands of local owners. It is not in good financial condition. Mr. Hogan, Danny Hogan is the attorney for that district, wrote a letter saying we would like this district should it go forward to participate in some of the maintenance of 75th Street, and as long as an inter-local arrangement can be made, our developer is okay with that situation. So just wanted the council to be aware of that and that we are in agreement with sharing the cost of the maintenance of that street. So we are in accordance and agree with the recommendations by the planning department, so we'd ask your approval today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. No lights, is there motion? Second, roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine approved, seven to zero. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Cherry Creek located west of 103rd Street and Blair High Road with a request for a waiver of Section 53-82B of the Omaha Municipal Code for cul-de-sac length. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Mark Westergaard, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the applicant, who is the Esch family. This is a piece of property that could almost be classified as an infill project. It's 60 acres right on the corner of Blair High Road and I-680 at about 103rd Street. Difficult piece of ground with a lot of grade to it. The uses that we have come up with that are proposed are single-family, matching the developments to the west, and on the east side, some multifamily development also. It is in accordance with the master plan. We worked with the Department of Roads because some improvements are going to happen on Potter Street and the access on Blair High Road, and so this layout is in accordance with those plans that I guess what's now called the Department of Transportation has in mind. So, planning board recommends approval. We're okay with the conditions, and we request your approval also.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 10.
with those plans that I guess what's now called the Department of Transportation has in mind. So Planning Board recommends approval. We're okay with the conditions, and we request your approval also.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 10, there are no lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Office Development and Avenue One located at 240 South 192nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today. With the applicant, R&amp;R, really out of Des Moines, is Mike Homa, Steve Guerin, Tom Ruprecht, and also with me today is Soren Jester, Kirk and Michael Lee, consulting engineers on this particular project. This is a 17-acre tract. It's a one-lot plat. It is part of the whole Avenue One development south of Dodge, West Dodge Road on 192nd Street. We're really simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this particular preliminary plat.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 11, there are no lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Kojasan LLC doing business as Yoshi Tomo, 6009 Maple Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Robert J. Rutter, Jr., 5623 Whitmore, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. And David Utterback, 6627 Work Street.
Thank you. And you're just here to answer any questions, or?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this is New Restaurant Day in City Council District One, it appears. I have two new restaurants in Benson here and one in Dundee, so I want to ask for my colleagues' indulgence a little bit to give each of you a chance to talk about what it is you're doing here. I know you're planning a new sushi restaurant in what was the old subway building, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead and talk about that a little bit.
So our plan is to open this just small, simple sushi restaurant. It's kind of a type of cuisine that's not really, there's no sushi to be found in midtown. The nearest sushi bars are five and six miles away, respectively. So our plan is just to kind of come in and sort of help bring some of the development that Benson's seen to that, to this side of the strip.
Great. And when do you hope to be open?
If I don't open by the first of October, I'm in big trouble. I would say late September.
Okay, all right. I'll mark that down because my kids are big fans of sushi, so we'll have to come try your place.
Good.
And I agree, it's a good, great addition to the mixture we have in Benson right now.
Mm-hmm.
So I look forward to helping you and being there and helping you be successful.
Yeah, I think, personally, you know, I think it's kind of the growing up of the Benson Strip, you know, it started out with a lot of bars and now restaurants and some other businesses are coming in, so I think it's good for the area.
Absolutely. Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item 16, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item 17, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Buena Vida LLC doing business as The Hoppy Taco, 5003 Underwood Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Malagna. Address is 5003 Underwood Avenue, 68132. I'm just here to, if you guys have any questions about The Hoppy Taco, I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. You know you're going to be some, but are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also want to give Juan the opportunity to talk about The Hoppy Taco. I saw, the signs are already up during Dundee Day last week, and I'm sure folks are anxious to see what you'll be offering, and I've always thought a restaurant like this can do well in Dundee, so I want you to talk about it a little bit.
Well, thank you, sir. We want to keep a simple menu because of the size of the kitchen, so we plan on having tacos, street tacos, regular tacos, tortas, quesadillas, nachos, and just some sides, and chips guac, chips queso, chips beaned, simple foods. Have, originally, the place was called Cas Republic. They have 27 craft beers on tap, local and midwestern beers, and I like the idea. It's just there's no food to drive the people in. Everybody that walks around this area, neighborhood, walks around with their kids, but people are looking for food. People that walk around look for food. So we're bringing tacos to the area. I haven't seen any tacos in the vicinity, maybe on Saddle Creek Road, there's a place there. I don't think it's a place that you would, like, your family could come in and kind of hang out. I also have another business called The Corner Kick. I have nothing to do with this, Don Millard, and it's, it was kind of the same concept before, and I brought it, I made it more of a family-friendly environment, and now we're doing great. So I plan on doing the same thing to this community, bringing the taco life to Dundee. I know there is a Mexican restaurant as well. I asked a lot of questions to the Dundee community. I've already set up a meeting on Thursday to speak to business owners around the area, Dundee Dell, E Creamery, and all the others in the vicinity, and we'll be meeting at the Dundee Dell, so I can answer any questions that they have. But I know there was a Mexican restaurant, didn't do very well, so I wanted to find out what they did wrong so I can do better. Unfortunately, the size of the kitchen limits my menu. I'd like to have more items on there, so eventually, I plan on doing something else to extend the menu a little bit more, but we're limited on space as well, so we don't want to make it too big, I guess. But please come by, anybody, and awesome beers, awesome cocktails, from margaritas to old fashions, really nice place. And if you come and check it out, from the outside, doesn't seem like a lot, you come inside, you're like, wow, I could come and have some tacos here.
Yeah, it's a great space. I think it will do well there. And when do you hope to be open?
So the business is open now. I open on Saturday for Dundee Day. I tried to open by Dundee Day, so we were able to open by Dundee Day, and we had the food inspector come in, their health inspector, everybody, fire marshal, and so it's ready to go right now. So if you guys want to stop by for lunch, we're open from 11 to 11. Well, since it's a small community, we might close a little bit earlier if it's, you know, people are already in bed, so.
Well, definitely come check it out. I think it is a good idea to get involved with the Merchant Association there in the Business Improvement District, like you're noting. I think they're an active group and can be helpful, too.
Yes, sir.
And I understand you're both former teachers, or maybe one still a current teacher?
My wife is still a teacher. She's down there, and then she teaches at Springlight. She teaches kindergarten. I, my last year was last year, I taught technology, but I've taught everything from pre-K to sixth grade. I decided to, I don't know, I'm more of a, I like to do a lot of things at once. I don't know how to explain it. I like to be up and down and thinking of different things at the same time. Mr. Palermo right there knows, he's met me and he knows how I work in the brain. That's why I was able to do the things in my school the ways that I did it. I was like, PTO president, I was, never mind. I did a lot of things at school, and it's very unfortunate that I had to leave just because I needed to focus a little bit on myself.
Councilman Jarom has a burning question. Will you have tequila? Right when he comes there?
So we got there, and there was one tequila, there was Avion Tequila, but I just met with a lot of liquor reps, and yeah, we'll be bringing some liquor, some tequilas, Herradura, Melagro, Patron, Don Julio. It'll be for sure a tequila bar. But we want to add some mezcal's. We have tons of bourbon, tons of whiskey, all the good stuff that, and it's all local and midwestern stuff, too, so.
Great. And I understand you're a teacher of Councilman Palermo's daughter, so she must have done said, well, you decided to retire and go in the restaurant business.
She drove me nuts, and that's why I did it. No, 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 she's a great kid, and everybody at our school is, they're all great students. If you guys ever get a chance, come and visit Gomez Heritage Elementary. I think they set the standard as far as discipline, or we don't, it's very minimal if there's, it might be like one student a year that might be giving you trouble at the school. Everyone else does a great job, and it's a very great community of teachers and students and families, so.
Great. Well, thanks for all you've done.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Mr. Palermo, you're next, and I think your task is to figure out how his brain works. So just going.
Well, I wasn't going to ask you this, but I just have a comment now. You know, the kids at Gomez definitely miss you. I know how you work. You're definitely a hard worker. If this passes today, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 17, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 18, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for Dante Black LLC doing business as Dante Pizzeria Neapolitano, 3852 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the city council, my name is Myron Kaplan. I'm with the law firm of McGill Gottsteiner, working in the left, 11404 West Dodge Road, Suite 500. With me today is Mike LaFurla. He is the manager of Dante Black LLC, the applicant. They're doing business as Dante Pizzeria Neapolitano. They're seeking a Class C and K license for 3852 Farnham Street in the Blackstone District. If you're familiar with their other location out at the Shops of Legacy, this is going to be virtually identical to that business, and we would ask for your approval and are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, I wanted to welcome you to the Blackstone area, which happens to be in District Three that I represent, and I noticed that you called me, and had I not been in court, I would have gotten back to you sooner, but given that I knew that it was going to be an easily supported item, I thought I'd wait till today to welcome you to the district, to Blackstone, encourage you to join the Small Business Association in Blackstone. I think it's called the Blackstone Business Association, that gets together monthly and talks about issues that affect the small business owners there. And then, if you're interested to reach out to the Business Improvement District that you will be in as a business owner, they do have space on their board. It's not just the property owners of the commercial properties or the residences on that street, so two thriving organizations that can help you and your business understand and thrive in the neighborhood. So I want to wish you the best of luck and make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 18. There are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 18, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for Dante Black LLC doing business as Dante Pizzeria Neapolitano, 3852 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the city council, my name is Myron Kaplan. I'm with the law firm of McGill Gottsteiner, working in the left, 11404 West Dodge Road, Suite 500. With me today is Mike LaFurla. He is the manager of Dante Black LLC, the applicant. They're doing business as Dante Pizzeria Neapolitano. They're seeking a Class C and K license for 3852 Farnham Street in the Blackstone District. If you're familiar with their other location out at the Shops of Legacy, this is going to be virtually identical to that business, and we would ask for your approval and are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, I wanted to welcome you to the Blackstone area, which happens to be in District Three that I represent, and I noticed that you called me, and had I not been in court, I would have gotten back to you sooner, but given that I knew that it was going to be an easily supported item, I thought I'd wait till today to welcome you to the district, to Blackstone, encourage you to join the Small Business Association in Blackstone. I think it's called the Blackstone Business Association, that gets together monthly and talks about issues that affect the small business owners there. And then, if you're interested to reach out to the Business Improvement District that you will be in as a business owner, they do have space on their board. It's not just the property owners of the commercial properties or the residences on that street, so two thriving organizations that can help you and your business understand and thrive in the neighborhood. So I want to wish you the best of luck and make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 18. There are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 19, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for Zero Hedge LLC doing business as Barchin, 6209 Maple Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Andrew Miller. I'm going to be the general manager of the bar, and I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Think this is Mr. Festerson day.
All right, thanks, Mr. President, and thanks for reaching out to me on this. All right. Thanks, Mr. President. And thanks for reaching out to me on this. So this is a space just to the north of Lot Two's expansion.
Correct, correct. It's half of it's part of, it's kind of attached.
By a separate operation, of course, with your own food and offerings?
Yeah, limited food offerings. It's mainly kind of a German style beer garden. All beers on tap, no bottles, no cans, and limited, limited craft cocktails and some gourmet food offerings.
Okay. So limited food options. Do you want to describe that a little bit?
Um, just some like bratwursts and sausages and pretzels and like gourmet, like tater tots and some gourmet food, gourmet bar, gourmet bar type food.
I notice the renovation's been taking place there for a while.
Yes, it's been, cost about an $800,000 investment in the property and built out the back space for the beer garden in the back.
That's great. We appreciate that investment in Benson. And you have other investments in Benson too. You want to mention those?
The, the Oda Ryan, he's a co-owner of Benson Brewery down the street. So he wanted to do a smaller, different concept. Benson Brewery is obviously a brewery. They do their own brewing and this concept is much less, less food offerings and not doing any of the brewing, beer brewing, so just.
I know he's been really successful there and I'm glad he's continuing to invest with this.
And he has plans for a couple of other restaurants in the Omaha area as well, so.
Great. And when will you be open?
I'm hoping to open mid to end of September.
Excellent. Thanks. Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 20. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 21, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Kelly's Package Liquor LLC doing business as Rhythm and Booze Package Liquor, 3501 North 30th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Starkaviches, 20405 Bear's Road.
Thank you. I'm just here to answer any questions?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 approved, seven to zero. Item 22, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Murphy Oil USA Inc. doing business as Murphy Express, number 8811, located at 4111 South 132nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of Murphy Oil USA, they're new to the Nebraska market. In 2016 are opening stores all over the state. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second, moved and seconded, no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 approved, seven to zero. Item 23, an application to consider a Class K liquor license for Absolutely Fresh Seafood Company, 1218 South 119th Street. A is communication in support.
Public hearing on agenda item number 23 is today. Proponents, please.
Greg Lindberg, owner of Absolutely Fresh Seafood, 1218 South 119th Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 23. No lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 24, a change of location request from GGP Enterprise LLC doing business as Paizan Pizzeria for their Class C K liquor license from 15619 West Center Road to 15606 West Center Road.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. As the clerk mentioned, this is just a change of location, a couple of feet away into a expansion for Paizan's Pizza. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 approved, seven to zero. Items 25, 26, and 27 all relate to Kino satellite agreements, resolutions to grant approval to EHPV Lottery Service to operate Big Red Kino satellite locations for the following: Same Old Bar, 1008 Bancroft Street, Patty McGowan's Pub and Grill, 4503 Center Street, Forte Omaha, 4727 South 96th Street.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 25, 26, and 27 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Kino. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard. I have with me today the three owners for the three locations that are appearing before you. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? This is four. We, if you wanted to come up and speak for the record, that would be fine, but we need you to come to the microphone. You're a proponent, correct? Okay. Let me have you come to the microphone here, please. And give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Tristan Scopio. I'm City of Omaha licensed general contractor. I'm 1701413. Is this light thing on?
It'll come on. What's your address again? I'm sorry.
4730 South 24th Street.
4730.
But I own these three properties. This is Nathan Castolar. I own that property, that property, and that property. And so in the due time, once I, once I get my, I'm a Class A license general, so once I get my Class A license, hopefully I want to submit a bid proposal to you guys that will create a City of Omaha Police Museum and the City of Omaha Fire Department Museum. That money should allocate more revenue to the city to hopefully eradicate homelessness in the city and provide more funding for different programs in the city. But that's another proposal that I will have to put together for you guys. I don't know really how that process works. I've already submitted it to the mayor's office, so you can contact Ms. Amy. It's just a proposal that will create jobs within 30 days, 90 days, and as a real estate developer.
Okay, but you're here today to support this one?
Yeah, I'm here to.
Okay, support these through.
I'm here to support this one. My only problem that I'm kind of concerned with the bar is that there was some city easement issues. And so I'm a little bit nervous that with the block A's that I've been dealing with, with certain, me, I'm a real estate developer. I'm a licensed general contractor. There are a lot of things that I really know how to do personally. I'm just showing you my credentials, that you understand the type of person I am.
Yeah, I think you're a little west of 10th Street.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's like right next to Grace University where you're doing that whole new, but that's my education. So I'm still going to Harvard.
Okay.
So I mean, I know what I'm talking about and I, once I have my Class A general contractor's license, I'll be the only African American in the entire state of Nebraska to be a licensed general contractor. So as a real estate developer, my projects are specializing in Title III.
Let me, let me, let me cut you off here because the issue today is about their license.
I'm totally fine with you guys.
And this is about Kino?
It's about Kino, yes.
Okay.
But my only problem is, is owning these properties.
Okay.
It's kind of.
We'll talk about that another day, okay? Let's stay with the item here that's talking about Kino.
Okay, well, I'm totally for the Kino, so I don't, I, I, but I just wanted to have a moment to let you guys know that I've already started this process with the mayor's office. So hopefully you will be hearing from me. I just got a letter in the mail about coming here today, so hopefully it will be realistic and I wish you guys well.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Are there no further lights? Moved and seconded to approve items 25, 26, 27. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Our, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 25 through 27 approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 28 through 30 were held on August 22nd, 2017. Moved and seconded to approve 28, 29, and 30. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 28 through 30 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 31 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 31 through 40 are approved, seven to zero. Item 41, a resolution to approve the West Farnham Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3817 Dewey Avenue in an amount up to $340,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Seaton with the Omaha City Planning Department. Yeah, the West Farnham Apartments Tax Increment Financing Project Plan is a comprehensive rehabilitation of a rather large historic apartment building located at 3817 Dewey. Five-story apartment.
Turn it over, please. Turn it around. You got it upside down.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, it's a five-story apartment building with nine units built in 1912. It's a local landmark and it's also a contributing structure in the Gold Coast National Register Historic District. The developer is SL Jensen Construction and the developer had been working with the neighborhood. The neighborhood, Blackstone Neighborhood Association supports the project. The total project cost is $2.9 million. The amount of TIF support requested is $340,000. Excuse me. Public improvements include sidewalks, curb and gutter, streetscaping, landscaping, and decorative lighting. Project has a little over $1.2 million in TIF eligible costs. The land uses are appropriate. Project is in compliance with the city master plan, promotes the goals of infill housing and historic preservation, and meets the criteria of the TIF ordinance. We recommend your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street here and happy to answer any questions on behalf of the developer.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. There are no lights. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve item 41. No lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem. Councilmember Jerem passes due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 41 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 42, a resolution to approve the Sorenson Heights Senior Housing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 6657 North 56th Street in an amount up to $500,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 42 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, again, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This TIF project involves the construction of some senior housing. It's on a 4.6 acre site just north of Sorenson and a little bit east of North 56th Street. The developer is Rob Woodling. He's a local developer with considerable amount of experience with affordable housing in Omaha. The project is just under $10.6 million. Amount of TIF support requested is $500,000. The proposed use is consistent with master plan, is compatible with existing zoning, and it meets the criteria of the TIF program. We recommend your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Rob Woodling, Foundation's Development, 1-886-SOUTH-126STREET. Just like to say really excited about this investment in an underserved part of our city and so really looking forward to, to developing this. The site has a history of weed violations. It's vacant for quite some time and so looking forward to putting it to a productive use for the community. So we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. This is in my district and Rob, thank you for, thank you for considering this. This is going to be a really good project. The only concern that I had early on, and I understand now the public works issue with opening 56th Street, but that concern still remains for neighbors who live on Mary Street where the road is, is an asphalt road and they're concerned about heavy equipment going on that road without, you know, some sort of effort by the city to make sure that that road, you know, is repaired if necessary or whatever. And so I'll be kind of watching that, but in terms of the project itself, it's a great project and thank you for considering it in my district.
Sure. And I would like to just add, sorry to interrupt, but we are trying to have our construction entrance beyond 56th, the temporary, so no heavy equipment would go on that road.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion? Oh, question. Mr. Harding, your light just came on.
Concern about Mary Street and how that, what was the public works response to how that would be responded to?
Public works response was that, you know, where, where 56th Street is, first of all, if you were going to come out of 56th Street, there was, there would be a right turn only because there's a median there. So they would only be able to go one way. And the traffic on 56th Street, because of a number of things, Raven Oaks, the Forest Lawn Cemetery and a number of others, the traffic is a little faster going there for people who are elderly trying to make that turn, but it might be a little bit difficult for them. So I understand the, I understand the reasoning for it and I understand the problem that would exist if they were to create another entrance through 56th Street.
Okay, and I understand that, but how, how did they respond to the part of maintaining?
They haven't, we haven't talked about it yet, but with Mr. Woodling, what he says was they're, they're going to make a temporary exit through 56th Street, you know, for the heavy equipment. So Mary Street is going to be okay, but it continues to need to be watched.
Okay, thank you.
Second, no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 42 is approved, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held September 5th, 2017, the third reading and public hearings on agenda items 43 through 45 shall be held on September 12th, 2017. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held September 5th, 2017, the third reading on agenda items 46 and 47 shall be held on September 12th, 2017. Item 46, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with Alphany Development LLC to implement the Zone Six Apartments at Exarban Village Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 6460 Francis Street and 6465 Shirley Street and to authorize the use of up to $1,625,568.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley here with City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 47, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Women's Center for Advancement in the amount of $39,377 to provide partial funding for one part-time client attorney, one full-time client attorney, and one full-time victim advocate as part of the Douglas County Community Response Team.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held September 5th, 2017, the third reading and public hearing on agenda items 48 through 50 shall be held on September 19th, 2017. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held on September 5th, 2017, the second reading and public hearing on agenda items 51 and 52 shall be held on September 12th, 2017.
Motion, Jerem? Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:06 PM.